Adding under 12A, you'll see that 12 is going to have all the way numbered. But 12A will be Superintendent Reed's budget referendum results for eight, 12, 25, with a motion and requesting a motion to accept the results from the board. Adding 12B, direction from the board about the budget. And 12A, consideration of new coaching staff.
12A or 12C?
Sorry, no, that's going to be 12L, sorry. I have to change all the numbers, it'll be 12L, consideration of the coaching staff.
And the new business is the first one? You're going to do the results first? Did they move everything down?
Yes. Yeah, move, yep, there'll be A and B, and then everything else will bump down, and then L at the very bottom.
Motion to accept the board meeting agenda?
Yes.
Any recognitions?
None. But, we do have a plan as we move forward that our activities and, sorry, community coordination will be bringing recognitions.
All right.
Yes. Mike, Mike.
Mike tonight. Consideration of minutes for the regular board meeting of 7:22, 25, and that's in a form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? No action required on the consent agenda, the personnel committee meeting on 7:31 and 8:00, 7:00. No action required. Any presentations? None? Any public participation, Deanna? Nope. Report from the superintendent.
So that was the link to the report that I sent you. I don't know if there's any questions, but they're just things that happened in the last few weeks and two months. So I shared information on our first community open house that will be occurring on August 25th at our festival. And Jessica George has gone around to local businesses today and passing out flyers and inviting them to join us. We're trying to work very hard to build those community relationships, so we're kind of excited about this idea. I toured buildings and grounds with Mr. Brady, Director Brady, a few weeks ago, and got to see what was happening, where we need to make improvements. There's been a great meeting with the transportation team as well, really looking at the task list. Vinyl siding is being replaced, there's been a lot of painting done, as well as grounds, you know, mowing and just tidying up. We also have bus drivers that are now in buildings, they've been supporting the custodial staff, so there's been a lot of movement, a lot of change, and I think that when we open schools, you'll see very healthy, safety, and welcoming environments, and that's thanks to these two custodians, the custodians and drivers working together for our buildings, so excited about that. I also shared with you current enrollment numbers, just so that you're aware, pre-K5, 151, middle school 111 students, high school 109 for total. And this was again earlier in August, and we're still monitoring numbers, so 371 students at that time that we were expecting. I shared with you some changes in an email based on enrollment, that we're carefully monitoring that, and we'll talk, we can talk more about that later. And then I shared with you, I don't know, a very engaging professional development, a three-hour webinar that really looked at how we see students and, and instead of looking at behavior as consequence, but being curious and wondering why are we seeing that behavior and what kinds of things that we can do. Dr. Laurie De Saltes also has written a book that I have just ordered, and I think that it can be really helpful for all of us, so I think that that would be something that we'll be looking into as far as professional development. I also attended the first of eight new superintendent-sponsored orientation meetings, helping first-year superintendents through MSMA, so that'll be really helpful. I have connections with a lot of the people that are there, so it was really nice to make those connections and to feel like there's someplace to go to ask questions, to make sure that I'm doing the things that I'm supposed to be doing and doing my best for the district. We also had a very dynamic admin retreat with principals and directors last week, a two-day retreat. We covered a lot of ground, and I can tell you that. You have a dynamite admin team here in this district that's working well together with directors, and they really helped to get me on board. So many questions, I mean, the agenda was really built around, "Tell me about this, tell me about this, tell me about this," so helping to build my capacity, and then, as we move forward, what are the things that you see and recognize that we need. So, again, just very appreciative of the team that we have here. And that was all from my report.
Is Jessica going to speak tonight in regards to her meeting with the businesses today, or can we do a follow-up here?
I think you can have a follow-up right now.
Could you shed a little bit of light on your meetings with the different businesses in the area and how they accepted that? And do you think that they'll be following through with our open house?
Yeah, I got a lot of, "Oh wow, this is great." I've had two businesses already call and fully commit that they'll be there. Every, every person that I greeted was very delightful to see somebody from the school, that I brought a flyer, you know, I commented and asked a few questions about each of the businesses while I was there, so it was good. I think people are going to be very responsive.
I did share your flyer today. I'm really trying to post a lot. The regional school posted it, and I shared it on several sites today. There seems to be a lot of positive acceptance of it, and, and being the community part, I don't know if you guys have seen all this, but it was phenomenal. The outlook seems to be very well-received, and hopefully this is the beginning of a new building as a community school.
I also went to both towns, so it's posted on their website, if it's not now, it will be, and they're also going to share it on their social media. They were very excited. They too will be sharing it to any businesses that I may have missed. So it's like, I went downtown, but many businesses did not open until four, so I hit all of them that were open down there today. But I think with the support of both the towns, they were excited to share the information that we should reach many people.
The, the questions that was asked today, and I sent you an email to Jessica to, they asked for the schedule of our board meetings, and they would like the live stream site as well. Maybe we can really begin to incorporate that so that people actually know what's going on and can be a part of the community as well. So I did forward that to you today, so we can forward it over to the clerks especially, they were the ones asking for it, so. And they did say something about our webpage.
And Director Bradford and Ms. George are both working on that, and we have a plan moving forward.
That's good, because that's one thing, so when we get that up and running too, we'll be as well. So I'm really looking forward to this, and I'm very pleased that you went door-to-door to a lot of businesses. I think that's going to be the heart of it, and that's, that is the start of it, and thank you very much.
I just wanted to also thank you for doing that, it's phenomenal. A question for you, did you hit up the library? Because they might be a good one to have there, too.
When I went out, they must have been on their lunch, their door was locked.
Okay, awesome.
So I will, I will hit the library. The library next to Stockton Springs, I did, but not, not right over here.
Oh, okay, but yeah, not the one, yeah, yeah, I was just thinking they'd probably be a, a good audience. The other thing I just wanted to mention, I know I am unfortunately not able to be at the open house, because it's our orientation up at Humane, and I think you're in the same boat. So just a request that if you, you know, given where things are at right now, like if there's any opportunity for anyone to just mention that Julie and I are not, like, just AWOL because we don't care, but we're out, because we're actually educators doing educational things in other places, and that would be helpful, I think, to make sure people know that.
Yeah, we'll have R.J. Robinson there as well. Again, there's that community, you know, that outreach that we're trying to be, that communication piece with the community, so he'll be there as well, and, yep, we'll be putting out information and sharing some wonderful things that happen, so you won't miss, you'll miss it in person, but we'll make sure you're caught up. So thank you.
You guys name-tagged with three of them.
There you go. Take a picture of yourself and paste it on the back of your T-shirt and just.
Here in spirit. Committee report. Committee reports.
That's you.
One of them.
Both of them.
Oh, yeah.
First off.
Yeah. We did meet, we met on July 31st and August 7th. We are bringing personnel recommendations to the board to be voted on. I believe they're all on here. It actually seemed to help the board as a whole for these meetings prior to this board For us to be able to talk and collaborate and, and get things out there so that we're all on board, or pretty much on board when we come forward, and we don't want any mishaps like we had in the, in the past, and really, we're excited for a new beginning. And as I said, it's all here on the agenda tonight to bring people forward, so I, I think we're on the road to a new beginning. Would you ladies like to add anything?
Just, just to concur, and I really want to thank the folks on the different hiring committees who helped put together sort of profiles of the candidates and really give the personnel committee a good sense of strengths and recommend, why recommendations were being
Any old business? No? New business? We're going to do the results first?
We are, but Jessica, I do not have that.
I'd like.
If, if I know it isn't the, the, sorry. Sorry.
I'll make that in a form of a motion to accept the results from the referendum. Any discussion? All in favor?
Shouldn't we say what the results are?
No, we lost, yes, but I don't have, I don't have them in front of me, she does.
So Article 1, the town of Searsport, in the affirmative was 90, and the negative was 82. The town of Stockton Springs, in the affirmative was 84, negative was 107. Total affirmative was 174, total negative was 181. The board, the school board declares that this article has to be. There's specifically a place, we're going to pass it around, that you need to sign, you'll see your name, you should have a black pen if you don't, I'll pass around my pen, but if you don't, please make sure you're signing it, except for the same person who passed it. May I have one? You just the top page.
It's just this one page?
Yes. And the next thing on the agenda is budget discussion, so we're looking for direction from the board of directors, where you want to go with the budget to, you know, we've heard, you know, again, just publicly, I want to make sure that everybody is aware that we thank all voters for getting out there and, and sharing their, you know, what their thoughts and feelings are as far as the proposed budget. We recognize that there is a negative vote, and we want to make sure that we're doing as best we can to support the students and their families that, you know, want their children educated here, but at the same time, finding that balance with the community. So, looking, asking for direction from the board so we can.
Can, go ahead. No, you go first.
So I know Ruth had asked this on an email, and I think, I don't have the number right in front of me, but if I remember correctly, we are about 240-ish thousand above where the fiscal '25 budget was. Is that correct, Deanna? Give or take?
Give or take.
My sort of intuitive reaction to the two failed votes is that we need to try very hard to get to a point where we're at zero, that we're coming in flat from last year. And I think candidly, that even that might be a tough sell, but I really don't think we're going to get anything beyond that. I have a, I guess a question to start with, and then I will probably have lots of other questions, but my question to start with, and actually first, I want to start with a commendation for what you have already done, and speaking to folks behind me as well, who I know were part of these decisions, in terms of consolidating where you could with staffing to avoid having to make new hires and so on. I don't think any of us want to head to layoffs, but I, my question at the moment is, are there any other open positions or positions that we know will be becoming vacant that we can look to other options for consolidation or not filling positions as a means of getting closer to a, you know, zero increase budget?
So, we are strongly, we want that message out there, that we do not want to impact students. We do not want to have a negative impact on students, but at the same time, can we be fiscally responsible and make sure that our enrollment numbers, our classroom numbers are appropriate, but without going over and overburdening teachers? I want to make that really clear. So we are looking at things carefully, and I think that, at this point, that position is a failure. I don't think that there are any other positions that we need to, and as you said, that earlier this month, we had already been looking at enrollment and numbers, and we believe that there's definitely some positions that we, we, you know, no teachers are losing positions, we're just not filling positions that are, that are vacant at this time. So that's the plan moving forward. Deanna, anything else you want to add?
Does that, sorry? I guess my question would be, follow-up question, how much does what we've done earlier this month, which I know was after we put the second budget together, how much does that help?
It gets us to zero.
Does it?
Yep.
So we think by paying attention to current enrollment numbers, and again, administration is looking very carefully and being very fiscally responsible when they're looking at their buildings and saying, I think that we can maintain what we're doing and still provide a programming and all the opportunities and activities that we have. So sports, everything is still there, we're not, we're not cutting things that we know will impact students, but we're just not filling some positions that will still be, have very appropriate classroom number sizes.
So, if we don't fill them, and we could come in at, at pretty much a zero increase, would we try to go with the November ballot so that we're not standing alone and that people actually come out and vote in then? Or would that put us on that timeline, and would we, would we fit that timeline so that we don't have to go against anything else at this time?
So Director Blanchard and I looked at a timeline today and tried to plan, you have to do some backwards planning to make sure that everything fits within the timeline. So we're looking at, if you give us direction today, that's what you want us to go with, is a 0% increase or somewhere in that ballpark, we would come back to you with a very specific budget and have a second meeting in August, on the 26th of August. And then we would follow that up on our September 9th meeting, signing the warrants, and then delivering warrants to the towns that same week. We would go with a district, a budget meeting, that we invite the public to come into and really talk about what those changes are on the 24th, and I'll share all these dates with you. And then we're looking at referendum vote on the 4th of November, which is voting day. That will save, again, the, the school district money by not having to pay the towns to run those things, and then we would have a second board meeting on the 5th of November to accept the results of, of the, the vote on the 4th. So that's our proposed timeline.
I'm going to make it in a form of a motion, because I believe you need to, to bring it in at zero.
Okay.
Any second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that when we put zero change or increase to our budget, when it's put in the revenue worksheet, Searsport goes down $11,849, and Stockton goes up $11,000 or less than a half a percent because of the way the mill rate and the changes, because of valuations. So that, even though we have a zero increase, one town goes down and one town goes up. And no matter how much we keep taking it down, we'd have to take it down like triple just to get everybody under zero, so.
And, and we will be meeting with the towns, I'm assuming? I think we need to collaborate with them a little bit more, is that in the future?
Yes, I think that Superintendent has had conversations today with, I'll let you.
No, go ahead.
With the town manager in Searsport, and there's an intention to bring both town select committees together here with the superintendent and the admin, and, you know, just have an open conversation, right? And the board, yeah.
I, I think that's something that would benefit all of us to, to do that.
I absolutely agree. I think that, that collaboration, and that's what we're working towards, we're working that we can put everybody on the same page, and I think until we can help to build capacity around our budget and what it looks like, so that the towns can get out and build that capacity with their, their constituents as well, that it's just going to be all the more helpful to all of us.
Yep.
I'm not sure that this is the right place for this, because we have a motion on the table, so tell me to, to hold, maybe it's something we talked about at the budget workshop, but I do have a lot of thoughts about things that we may want to do at the budget meeting to make our case more clearly, and just want to make sure we get time to talk about that, but it's okay if this is not that time.
I think we are, you can mention it.
I think you can mention it now, I think it would be very helpful to mention it now, and we can get it in a minute and make sure that we're, yep.
So I think two big things. In following the social media comments over the last week or so, you know, as things were, we were seeing a lot of people who still didn't feel like they were seeing enough of a, a kind of blow-by-blow, like, what exactly are you changing and how is this? So I think we need to do something to really map out, you know, these are the classrooms that we consolidated, these are the things that we eliminated, you know, whatever, like, in very plain language, not, the, the thing that I think is challenging about the budget meeting is that, you know, we have to talk about things in the buckets that they're out, and that, that's not how people think about it. So we've got to find a way to have something that makes sense to the first.
Beyond just the dollars.
Beyond just the.
Dollars, but a clear explanation.
And also beyond just the, the articles and the sort of what's in this center that we're voting on and things like that. The other thing that I found astonishing as I was watching the, not astonishing, troubling as I was watching the dialogue, I, I think we are getting to a point where the school budget is being made to bear the brunt of all of our tax increases, which is not accurate. I didn't jump in, because I don't understand it well enough to be able to explain which percentage is coming from the school and which percentage is coming from the increase, but we've got to find somebody, and frankly, if that means like, you know, paying Drummond and Woodson or somebody to, to do the, and like, somehow, we've got to be able to say to the towns, this is what the school budget is actually contributing to your increase, and this is where the rest of it is coming from.
And I think the town managers will be able to explain that, because they do understand.
And the town reports, every, if you go back and look at their town reports, they show the breakdown, and schools, our school district typically comes in somewhere in the low 60s, and so, and that hasn't changed. So what happens is, is that, that means if everybody's taxes are going up, which they are, it's proportion, it's somewhat proportionate, although it may be a little more on the town or a little more on the county, a percent more for the district or a percent under, but the percentages seem to run the same and just follow along if you look back at the years, and we can pull the historical data on that.
I did have an interesting conversation with Mr. Gilway today, and he shared that the challenge right now for, when we look at, specifically, he was obviously talking about Searsport, is that valuations have gone up, the mill rate's gone down, but valuations have gone up, and based on that, the towns are not getting as much money from the Homestead Exemption Act, and that, as well as, I, Searsport, I believe, if I understand what he said correctly, is that they had carryover funds that they had been using to buy down the, the local town taxes. They've reached that, that cliff, there's no more carried funds to, to buy down their tax bills, so all of a sudden, they've fallen off a cliff, and tax, tax looks like a lot. And it, he as well expressed concern that there's a message out there in the community that somehow it's the school district that's driving up the, the taxes, and it's not, and he understands that as well. So I think our, hopefully, our, you know, that, that's why we need to get together with our town selectmen, that's why we need to build this message that we are collaborating, we are working together, but it's not one against the other, it's we together, and all of it combined creates a tax bill for people. And it's, not that it isn't burdensome, but it's not more of just the school district, it's more of everybody adding to that tax.
And, and it might behoove us to also ask Kevin Kelly or Kylie, however you pronounce his name, the commissioner, he was very forthcoming at the Stockton Town meeting, and, and maybe it's with Mr. Gilway wanting to collaborate with the town of Stockton as well, and the board and the administrators, maybe it's time to bring in a few other, and, and actually write it up in black and white and, and make it a part of the packet or whatever we have to do, because she's absolutely right, that we have to make sure that these, the citizens in the two towns actually understand it, and maybe it's for our benefit as well, because we try to explain it and we're not always right, so. As Mr. Gilway did explain a lot of it today, and so did Mr. Kelly, a lot of it made sense with the way they talked, because the state is the one that sets the base for the taxes, and they're kind of making it the burden of the, the schools, when in fact, it really isn't, so it's time to set or educate all of us to that point, so that would be a good point.
So perhaps we might consider the end of note of September, that second tentative meeting that we usually have for the board that we make at a workshop.
Yep.
And again, invite both boards from Stockton Springs and, and Searsport, as well as this board and the admin team, to sit around and have a conversation and really try to understand, and again, open to the, the public, it's a workshop, but to really examine what the budget looks like from our issue 20s perspective, but also from the towns, what their, their tax assessments, their bills are looking like, so that we can hopefully build that capacity.
Thank you.
All in favor, any more questions I should ask first?
Any more questions, comments? All in favor? Thank you, Deanna and Laura for doing that, and the admin for working that to come up with some suggestions to status. Next on the agenda, the substitute pay update.
So Jessica and I and Deanna were looking at just our subrates, and we want to be competitive with local, other local districts. One thing that you should be aware, working and speaking with the admin team last week at the retreat, it's challenging. Our issue 20 is, is challenged at times to find substitutes to cover classrooms. I'm not sure of the exact data, and I bet we can go back and find, but school principals are covering classrooms instead of doing their principal jobs a lot. And I don't know the exact, but I would guess at least once a week, and perhaps more, that they're in classrooms covering because we can't find subs. And that's even with shifting people around, people have been so flexible, but the end story is, I think that we need to be a little bit more competitive when we look at, so So Jessica looked at other districts near us that people that might be subs, might be Belfast, maybe I'm not new, but Bucksport and maybe Handed and we went with. So recommendation um to increase. So I'm looking at certified teachers. Currently, we pay twenty dollars an hour and I'm recommending an increase of twenty-one fifty per hour. Not certified teachers from fifteen dollars to, did we say seventeen dollars or seventeen dollars? I think that's what we changed seventeen. So you should have. Not the si- you should have, it might be sixteen.
I'm sorry, what was that? What was that category?
So just, you should have this in the packet.
Yeah.
So you follow that one. That's the one that's correct. So, but it's uncerti- non-certified, so it's fifteen dollars an hour.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, I mean, from fifteen to sixteen, yes. And in uh support staff from fifteen to sixteen and tutors from twenty-five to thirty. So those are the changes that I saw.
The sixteen should be seventeen.
That was my last plan. Because it's based on that there's a new law that's going to affect after we had, well, not after we had that conversation prior, but we didn't realize that that will, we have to make sure. So both of those, the sixteen dollar ones should be bumped to seventeen. To make sure that we're following the law.
Do all these new raises take place the same time as as the teachers as well? Or does this one take place ahead of time?
I'm recommending that we start the new year so that we get an advertise.
I I I get that, but do they by law change all at the same time?
I am not sure. I don't know. Does that agree, Deanna? Do you have that date?
No, they don't.
I will find something else.
That's right, they don't.
Yes.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept your recommendations for the pay increases. Any other comments? Any questions?
So.
Sorry, just one comment. If you're um publishing this, make sure you change twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Thank you.
To be the current one.
Six, thank you.
Um, and then, eh I mean, you've probably already thought of this, but if we are really actively looking for people, which I didn't realize, um probably having something at our community open house that is a table or something that explains. And also that clearly explains what the requirements are. Because I honestly don't even know what like, I, does somebody need a college degree to be a substitute teacher? Do they just need a high school diploma? Do they need, like, what what are the requirements for all of these?
So do you want me to update this with the current and bring this back at the next meeting just?
I'd like you to update it, but you don't.
Okay.
We can still approve it tonight.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Sabrina, you all set? All in favor? We need to select a delegate from the school board who will attend the October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five MSBA delegate assembly at your August school board meeting. In the past, we have always asked and not everybody can do it. So um do they want time to think about it or?
You can do whatever. We just wanted it out there so people could plan, look at their calendars.
And if and if they, if someone wanted to stay overnight to attend both days, then those those expenses would be covered.
October eighteenth. You guys want time to think about it and bring it up to the next meeting?
The one on the eighteenth is a Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
And is that different than the two-day fall conference? That's listed a little later.
So there's a MSBA delegate assembly um at your August school board meeting. And then there is the October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, which is a little bit different. That's the NSMA Fall Conference and that's more of like a a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Um, training, professional development.
With breakout sessions, that's super helpful for board members, yeah. Many, many topics.
More for, right, somebody that's representing this board that goes and learns more about board process procedure.
Sorry that I can, I I probably confused a bit by what I said.
So it's true.
Yep, so maybe we should make Ruth and Chris aware of it as well before any decisions. I was thinking that too, but I, I, I would, you know, I, that's where I was getting, yeah, leading to. But um so we'll make them aware of it and maybe at the next board meeting, um bring it up again so that by then it, somebody might be able to check the calendars and see if they're available and.
Perfect.
Is that all right with you guys? So we don't make it in a form of a motion? So we'll table that one?
Sure.
Okay.
I have to bring it back to the next meeting, yeah.
Yep.
And the same with going down to the NSMA Fall Conference?
Um, yes, but E, yep.
Yep.
Um, that would be E, you guys, and we'll um bring that back next time so everybody can check the calendars.
And perhaps we can, we we'll send the board members more information on E so they can.
Mm-hmm.
Because MSMA might even have their breakout sessions already.
These are linked and it's all right there.
Oh, beautiful.
They can, they can get on if you look at this digitally, if the links are all there. And I will send you to give you that background information. It was a lot of paper to print. So I did save it. We can bump back up ones. Consideration of.
Are we good with that one? Okay, consideration of regional twenty unit, regional school unit number twenty to add coverage for the job classification of director of facilities and maintenance under main PERS consolidated particip- participation. Okay.
This is the P, uh what you voted on prior, um is that correct?
Yes.
The, the, yes.
The exact wording.
This is, this is the exact wording that you'll, that in that page you'll have to read all the.
Go ahead.
It's just beyond, it follows the the packet, follows the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
We need it in a form of a motion before we can discuss it, correct?
Mm-hmm. Do I have to read this whole thing?
That is the motion.
Okay, here's your motion. Regional School Unit Number Twenty to Add Coverage for the Job Classification of Director of Facilities and Maintenance Under Its Main PERS Consolidated Participating Local District Plan for Certain Non-Teacher Plan Employees Effective September First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five. To see if Regional School Unit Twenty will vote to change its main public employees retirement system, main PERS, participate in local district consolidated plan effective September First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, and agree to A, add coverage for its director of buildings, grounds, and transportation who regularly works more than thirty-two hours per week under regular plan AC effective September First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five. And B, continue to provide coverage for its central office staff who regularly work more than thirty-two hours per week and who are not covered by the teacher retirement program and to its school support employees who were members of MSAD Number Thirty-four or MSAD Fifty-Six Main PERS. PLD Retirement Plans Immediately Prior to Become and Employed by Regional School Unit Twenty On July First, Two Thousand Nine Under Regular Plan AC. And C, continue to exclude all other school support employees who are not covered by the teacher retirement program, including school board members from participating in the PLD Consolidated Plan. And D, to allow its director of facilities and maintenance currently employed by Regional School Unit Number Twenty on September First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, who elects to join main PERS to purchase prior service upon the employee's full payment of all associated cost. Regional School Unit Number Twenty will not participate in the purchase of or prior service. And so employees are responsible for paying the full liability associated with this service. E, to authorize Laura Miller, superintendent, to sign the amended agreement between Regional School Number Twenty and main public employees retirement sys- system. Motion approved as written. Wow.
Got some words.
Yeah. Any comments? Um, I have one. We had talked about others. Is that going to be in their job description in the future or are we leaving those alone?
For now, we're we're leaving them alone. If someone comes in and and requests to be included or we, or it seems beneficial to include them, the board will cons- will consider it on a position-by-position basis. And that would have to do with eh at director level positions that aren't covered by a teacher retirement plan, such as the IT director.
That's, yeah. I I meant in the future, if that was gonna be part of an ad- advertisement as we're looking to, um, it's not easy to replace Bob, I'll say that right out loud. But in the future, to any other applicants, um, as we're looking to become um as competitive as can be in the higher-end field, I wanna make sure that we're looking to fulfill that as well if we need to be.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions?
I'm just, I'm confused because I thought that we were switching transportation to the business manager. Like, I'm just confused about the names of the positions, the director of buildings, grounds, and transportation, and then the director of facilities and maintenance.
That, they should say the same thing. That's, that's, I missed that when I was editing this.
Ah.
So we probably have to amend that number A, letter A by saying um facilities and maintenance.
That makes sense now.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you for catching that.
Julie? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna skip the next one. We're gonna table that, correct? Consideration.
Consideration of Approval for the Eighth Grade Overnight Field Trip to Camp Kiev. And that should be in your packet?
Mm-hmm.
And that's in a form of a motion? Any questions?
Mr. True Take Art is here to answer the questions.
I must say, this is probably one of the best trips that we have approved for, I don't know how many years now.
Twenty plus.
I thought so, but they'd be telling how long I've been here, so, um. I I I full support this trip. I think it does the kids great. Um, they talk about it forever. It seems that they involve everybody. All kids are included. It's it's a great trip as far as I'm concerned. Fully support this, but comments?
Having attended this with different classes, I can say it's, it is a fabulous opportunity for our students. And I'm very glad to see that we continue to do this.
Any comment, Sabrina? All in favor? Thank you, Josh. Okay.
Considerations of the.
Approval of the school handbook. So Searsport Elementary Handbook is first.
We did not print them out again on a lot of pages. You have a lot of links. If you do want them printed out, uh Jessica, we'll print them up for you and you can pick them up at a little date. But I didn't print them out at this time.
Was there any changes, do you remember?
I think that David did, uh, Mr. Wolcott's did a few updates and things like that, but not anything lately from what I could get, gather from this conversation.
And I guess this comes, do we still do the the meetings with the the parents in open house or something? I can't remember how we did it, Josh, about going over certain things. Is it gonna be like the sports ones where we are going to have the parents meeting so they can't say, oh, I didn't know that?
Not for the handbook. The handbook goes out, there's a QR code.
Is he over there with his last?
I can, I know, Mike, he can, he can. Um, the 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 student handbooks will go out, at least in the middle of high school, is a QR code. And they will go out in the the first of the day packets that they'll have to read, sign, and return. And then as far as Athletic School, we'll work with the the new activities coordinator to schedule meetings to review changes and have conversations around.
Good, because they seem to want that as parents to make sure they know the rules. Any questions, guys? I make that, all in favor? I think we did that, didn't we? Okay.
Did it, was there a second? Sorry.
Hmm?
Who's that? Julie?
Yep. Motion to accept the Searsport District Middle School High School Handbook? Any questions? I think he answered those two, most of them. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. And here's the co-curricular handbook. Make a motion to accept the co-curricular handbook?
Second.
Any questions? That's where I'm gonna question. Um, in the past, we, for years, we met with parents and we discussed a lot of rules with the with the handbook. And then everybody gets busy and and we didn't, where there seemed to be a conflict. So in the future, are we going to make sure there's parents' meetings and so forth and so on? Thank you. He said yes. If you guys are back to to him. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Consideration of New Administrative Staff. Is there a name with this business manager?
There is, so I can share profile with you and I actually, I actually like to introduce you to the person. So um the personnel committee is recommending Shandra Hodgson from, who's currently employed in our issue seventy-one, who has, um, again, we discussed this at the personnel committee, um, more than twenty years of experience as a school finance director. We feel like she's the appropriate and just the right candidate for our issue twenty. And we're very excited to make that recommendation. And Shandra's here tonight. If you'd like to meet her or ask any questions or greet her after the meeting, that'd be great.
Um, I have one question before we accept this position. I believe we changed the title of this. So what is the actual?
It should, it should be like Director of Finance and Transportation.
So I'm going to um change my motion to read that as the Finance Director.
Director of.
Director of.
Finance and Transportation.
Yes, Director of Finance and Transportation. And Shandra Hodgson.
Yes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We cannot discuss personnel, but all in favor? Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of New Support Staff. Do you guys wanna take these as one or individual?
Okay, take them together.
Okay. I'm gonna make it in form of a motion to EdTech Elementary Four, Five Resource Room. Other names here?
Sorry. I'm trying to reach you in so much, you know, I wrote these down somewhere, but um help me out, Jess.
EdTech Elementary Four.
That is, oh, wait, I have it right here, sorry.
Shannon Erb.
I do have that written down.
Shannon Erb.
Shannon Erb as the EdTech and, yep, the resource room. And Michaela Bailey in the praise program.
And the subcaller?
And the subcaller, Jessica George.
Oh, welcome. And the K through twelve Student Activities and Communi- Humification Direct Coordinator.
RJ Robinson.
And those are all in a form of a motion? As protocol, we do not discuss personnel. All in favor? Welcome, welcome. Consideration of New Teaching Staff, Resource Room?
So we have um a a new teacher recommended, recommended by Director Littlefield, Leslie Max. She is an experienced resource room special ed teacher. And Mr. Littlefield is very excited for her to join our district.
Was there one other one or is that something different?
This is just one, one resource room teacher that we're covering, three, four, and five.
And that's in a form of a motion? All in favor? Okay, next. Next. It's not new.
Yep, sorry. Um, so we have, um, uh, somebody that you, it didn't go to call, uh, personnel, it's somebody that's already, has been hired if by, uh, in this district, has worked in this district, it would be, um, Christine Obrich as the girls varsity soccer coach. Um, you may remember that you approved, approved RJ Robertson as a coach of the girls soccer team because he's taken on this new position. It's really important that he takes on that position wholeheartedly and so we posted and looked for, um, uh, another coach for the girls soccer team and we were able to find somebody that has experience in this district as a coach.
Yeah, and she was a former employee and they get softball coach. That was in a form of a motion since I didn't have a name or letter. All in favor? Oh, we need a second first.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Date, time, and location of the next board meeting?
So we will be here again on August twenty-sixth because of the budget. We want to make sure that we have to have, you have to, um, approve the budget, um, as presented then, six-thirty, right here in the office.
Okay.
Are we gonna do a budget workshop at, um, at six o'clock just, just to go over the detail of the changes?
Sure.
Did I, did I get that impression from Sabrina that she wanted that?
I thought that was gonna come out, um, I thought we was doing that, um, that he.
We will have, we will have a little bit of a, a budget conversation workshop next Tuesday.
Yep.
As part of the workshop, the.
Oh, at the, at the.
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm happy to have a half an hour review of anybody that can't make it. We're doing, just so that everybody is aware, the public, and it will be posted tomorrow. Um, the school board is having a workshop retreat next Tuesday. It's open to the public. It starts at six-thirty and will actually be at the Mermaid Plaza. Um, so if anybody wants to join, but we will be talking about the budget at that time. But if we want to, we need for a half an hour, start at six and just do a budget review before the board meeting, we can do that.
I think, I think that would be a good idea in case public wants to attend the, sort of the workshop for the budget to have any conversation or share any public, any thoughts, any comments prior to the board meeting.
So budget workshop at six o'clock and then board meeting at six-thirty.
Sorry, I think I'm losing the, the plot here a little bit. So is this the budget workshop at which you're expecting to also bring together the town?
No.
No.
No. This is just a review of the, the budget that's gone before to.
To.
To the community per vote.
The detail, the details.
Details of, okay.
And at the board retreat, we will be discussing this if we need to.
As well.
Yeah, as well. We want to just make sure that, yeah, it's covered, so it will be covered a little bit, Dave, that this will be.
Got it.
Your statement about what the changes are.
So there's a strong possibility that I will not be able to be there on the twenty-sixth again because it's orientation week. Um, I will see if I can shift the thing I have that night, but, um, yeah, it isn't looking good. Uh, but it doesn't sound like that's gonna be a huge issue because we'll talk about it on the nineteenth and then we have something else.
And hopefully, based on your feedback, that we can come up with some really clear statements about explaining and being very clear about what's different. And I think that's what we could present on the twenty-sixth to the public and just be, practice that, that wording.
We're meeting at five-thirty as a board, as just us, correct? At five-thirty, we're?
Yes.
Okay. And then the public can come in at six-thirty.
The workshop begins at six-thirty.
At six-thirty.
There's no meeting at five-thirty.
It's supper, yeah. Okay.
I guess I would just say, if you, and I think it's a good idea, but if, if you're really seeing this as a workshop where you want public participation, I think that needs to be made really clear to the members of the community because, I mean, historically, like, I don't think anybody's ever seen what we've labeled as budget workshops as an opportunity for the public to come in and ask questions and even if technically that might have been the, you know, might have been an option, I don't think it'd be.
So I want to be really careful because the board workshop is not a public, when, when boards get together and have a workshop, that's professional development, that's work that the board is doing, the public can be there, but there's not a dialogue with the public. It's open to the public because it's a public meeting.
Uh-huh.
But it's a workshop for you as the board to, and there's a whole bunch of things on the agenda. The budget is just a little piece, but there's, you know, setting goals, setting norms, set.
Wait, I'm not talking about the nineteenth, I'm talking about the twenty-sixth.
So the twenty-sixth, that half hour, that can be, yes, that could be, that's an open meeting. Yes, fair enough.
So, yeah, again, just if you think that you want, we, I shouldn't say you, we're not, you know, we're not on two sides of this. Like, if we want that to be an active opportunity for public engagement, I think we need to be very clear that we're looking for that then. Yeah.
Any other questions? Motion To Adjourn At Seven Twenty-seven? All in favor? Thank you.